The October 20th meeting of the Marion Town Council shall now come to order. We'll begin with the invocation given by Lieutenant Rick Billings.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for all your many blessings. Jesus, much in part for my life, and thank you that I can be together at this meeting, Lord. We ask you to bless the council that they will make the proper decisions that they need to make tonight, Lord. Just be with them while it's out watching, and just be with them. Just let the good things happen tonight, and just let us all be together in civil manner. Just bless us all, Lord, and our families while we're gone. And just be the blessed little thing, in Jesus' name and prayers.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll begin with the roll call. I see that we have one member absent, and we wish him well and hope him speed in recovery. We will need an approval of the minutes of October the 6th. We have an approval, a motion and a second, rather. Any discussion? All in favor? We need an approval of the agenda. I noticed that we have several items in closed sessions tonight on the agenda. Are there any additions to be made to the agenda?
There are no more.
Counsel, any additions that you're aware of?
No.
Then we need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I think that motion should approve the agenda as is.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we have no public hearings, we have no public presentations, and do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Mr. Carter, would you look at that, please, for me, sir? Thank you, Counsel. We have one person signed up for public comment tonight, and so we will begin by welcoming Dr. Charles Wasson to the podium.
Thanks very much. I just had a couple items to kind of bring up. Last time, just town council meeting, you mentioned the vaping problem in middle schools across Virginia. Todd Vaughn got a comment on that, that seems to be a statewide problem. Well, the FDA came out, has issued a nationwide warning about seven adroxymitric choline, opioid substance found in some products available in data stations convenience stores, also in vaping stores. This particular chemical is more addictive than opioids and is being used by kids in their vaping device. So, to me, that's another reason to look closely at these vaping stores, which Marion has, in my opinion, an excess number. Next item I have, let me preface it by, 1975, mayor was W.W. Scott, lived over in Los Angeles, that's where I live. And he and my dad worked out an agreement defining the right-of-way that the dad gave to the town, and he accepted that right-of-way, with the map defining it very clearly, like each February 1975 document, going from the water treatment plant to the water pump station down at the mill, Water Mill Road. Well, I lived, I built a home up there, 19, 14 years later, 1979, and did that for some years. And in the 80s, early 80s, police department was shooting pistols and rifles, sheriff department started shooting pistols and rifles. And I was out of this area for a while, came back, and shooting had increased up there. Now, there was Department of Corrections and Training School associated with Department of Corrections, there was Department of Recreation and Conservation Recreation. There were people associated with, police officers associated with Humming Brothers State Park, now they're shooting, fireman's in. And I don't know how many other people that up there. I'm certainly sure it was not in W.W. Scott's vision when he and my dad signed an agreement, giving the town permission to go from the water treatment plant to the pump station in the mill. It's just expanded way out of proportion. Last month, SWAT team composed of people from counties from Romo to Bristol. I talked to Sonnoh, Lieutenant Finney was there, Finney was there, I don't know if he's there now. And Courtney Wilder, he's on, looking for supervisors, he seemed to be one of the people in charge. Person from the county counties, some other counties were there. But the name of the organization is the Southwest Virginia Criminal Justice Training Academy. So, we've gone from, you know, the town being able to have easy access to the pump station from the treatment plant, to the town, somebody keeps giving permission, inviting people to use this shooting range. And I think I've told you before, I've talked to people up there and said, you know, the FBI occasionally, an agent will use it, park shooting and, or practice shooting and stuff, and other people. Couple of years ago, SWAT team was up there doing their exercises on my property, on private property. They weren't limiting themselves to where the fence is, they were over on their property. Last week, this is the incident report. Rusty's here somewhere, maybe, was?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, he investigated it. My daughter lives up there, and her husband and a nine-year-old. Her husband and nine-year-old, very sensitive to, to their food and dyes and whatever's in the air, bee stings, whatever. And they were in their yard on their porch, and I started burning, and started coughing and choking, good degree. Nine-year-old grandson said, am I gonna die, am I gonna die? And they got in a car, just got out of the way, they figured, well, maybe there was a leak at the water treatment plant, chlorine or, fluorine or something like that, and called 911, and I think you ended up, Mr. Hammond ended up investigating it. Turned out they were using tear gas, Department of Corrections, is that right? Department of Corrections was using tear gas up there, and tear gas had drifted down to, the houses up there are very close to shooting range, and the churches are pretty close to shooting range. They're all within three, four hundred, five hundred yards. So, those are pretty much facts, you know, the facts as I seen them. Look at y'all as my representatives, if I was sitting where you were sitting, I would say, hey, we really need to do something about this. It just gets escalating and escalating, and if you, you know how police work's been going over the decades. The weapons they use, the tactics they use are, have multiplied according to criminals that got their own weapons and all that stuff, all that other stuff. But I just think it'd be courtesy or something reasonable, using the golden rule, to find some other place for all this activity to occur. I've talked to the county for 25 years, over 25 years, about this off and on, and but recently, we could have talked to them about it. They have a spot, there's nobody within a mile. They have it in their five-year plan, have a shooting type range out there. But they've got the land, they've got the money, and, you know, if y'all could work with the county, and kind of base this process, and where at least all the other people that'll use the shooting range can go out there and use that, and they have the town police, that seems reasonable to me, within the spirit of what W.W. Scott and my father, the documents, based on. The town of Marion has a right-of-way, but the town of Marion has invited people that are just, have nothing to do with the town of Marion. Especially when you end up with a thirty-county area between Bristol, Romo, Southwest Virginia Criminal Justice Training. So, I just hope, I wish someone would take it upon themselves and tell me who has a final say on doing something, some accommodation for people that live there, and, you know, making some changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, of course.
Would that be an issue that maybe our committee, the county's committee, I assume it'd be the police committee, could get together and discuss with Dr. Wasson?
I think the police committee would be the appropriate committee from our end. I don't know what the county would say, but if you would like to make that in the form of a motion, we can definitely send the committee to look into that.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and I will do that. Did you say the Department of Corrections was there to?
The Department of Corrections is there to train the officers that work there, but they have a training academy, where they, three or four times a year, they're up there, where they train people for a job there. Or, you know, I don't know all the details about training.
Yeah, they turn around and they have the class going.
Okay, send it to the police committee, maybe to discuss, see what they can do, if there's an issue that fathers should be, they believe in. I don't know what the issue, what they can do, but I'd like them to talk about it.
Well, I mean, the police appear to be the ones that are in charge of who comes and goes, but the town, the mayor is in charge of what they do. But y'all represent the people, like me, I live in town. They, they don't, some of them have businesses in town.
So, we have a motion, and, did I hear a second?
Yeah, true.
Yeah, oh, okay, I was gonna ask what the chair. So, we have a motion and a second to send this to the police committee to correspond with the county, possibly to see what type of guidance or solutions we can give to the area. Is that close enough in the form of a motion? Okay, all in favor? And so we'll send that to the police committee.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to thank Suzie, she's helped me on a number of issues before, just outrageous issues in the past.
It was probably six-thirty in the morning.
Well, when she was on board of supervisors, the board of supervisors passed a motion pertaining to some of my business. And I thought it was all, everything was okay. Five years later, I go and I call on the carpet, we're trying to do something, the board of supervisors have voted against. I had to go back and find Suzie and Donnie Fulon and Jake, and all these people that were on the board five years before to say, hey, remember that vote? And they said, yeah, we did. So, the county, between the vote and getting it down on paper to change what the vote said, with Suzie, Mr. Hammond, correct me.
I have another question, if I could, about what Dr. Wasson said. Back to the vaping.
This pertains to?
To vaping.
To, okay.
Is that all right?
We'll allow it, yes, but I see someone in the audience that I promised would get a chance to speak. So, let's see if we can move on through this, yes. Please proceed, but.
Oh, okay. I would just like, maybe Ken could answer this question. When the vaping stores come in to towns, my understanding that we can't tell them what to do, right, Ken? But if they have these poisonous items in their stuff, can we not?
If anybody comes in, their business office here, if they're opening up a store that sells any type of vaping, or they fill out a form, they go see plate and, oh, they're on their side. If they start a certain occasion, they're not selling any THC or anything, any illegal product. And they do spot check on them, and that, as you guys have noticed here in council, you receive some of the items. They are free deals, and I've had police officers do as well, so it is to be warned. Now, the fact that vapes carry their own issues, even though they're not necessarily THC, Dr. Wasson and I totally agree on that, and unfortunately, that's illegal business in town as well, and we don't get ready like that. This convention, when I, the women authorities that owe it to you to do that, Romo charged a $20,000, I think.
If I can just speak up on that, Romo does not doing that, they've determined that's illegal. They actually want to look at the town of Marion's ordinance, we have an ordinance that says that they cannot be within 750 feet of a school, of a residential area, of a church, of a park. Now, I think that's what Romo is going to go to, so we've got an ordinance in place that, that we know there, is at least one, it's not more, that's in violation of their ordinance.
Well, I don't know what the vaping stores are doing at all, I'm saying is the FDA issued a nationwide warning about this particular chemical that's sold in vaping stores. And, you know, there's gotta be some explanation for which six vaping stores in Marion, it's just not, there's something more to it than just, you know, what's appeared on the surface.
Okay, thank you for your comments, and we'll certainly take all that under advisement. Mr. Ert, would you like to address the counsel?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate your patience.
I'm here tonight to address the counsel because of the homeless encampment that's in my front yard. I became aware of it when the Smith County News contacted me and asked if I had any comment. And from that point forward, I have been reluctant and hesitant, and I've mostly thought about, one day I have to stand before Jesus. I know that sounds, but, you know, that's been my thinking. What do I do with a homeless person in my front yard? That's, I mean, obviously indigent, no place to go, and ask if he can camp over there across the railroad taxi? Because the thing is, the railroad track intersects my property. The property I live on is about one-third of the property across the river, and it's become a natural magnet for homeless people. I didn't know I owned the property until after I had already bought it. My uncle Sanford, the, sold me the property. And he kept telling me, he said, I've got property across the river I want to give to the town of Marion. And so I said, I thought it was just, what is he talking about? And so, once I had purchased the property, because I moved in with a lease purchase, once the final applied paperwork was drawn up, this property, I became aware it was mine. And now, there's homeless camped up, and it's been growing, and it's grown exponentially. Because I talked to a young man who asked if he and his mother and his brother could pitch a tent over there. And I said, I don't care. What did I say? I didn't know there was an ordinance. Anyway, long story short, I've been fine, which I expected, I knew that was gonna. And so, today, my brother David and I, we put up no trespassing sign, and the town of Marion is free to enforce the, you know, trespassing ordinance and whatever. But I'm here because of what I said to the judge when, you know, he asked me to, you know, what he had to say. I said, I don't think it's just an individual property ownership problem, in my opinion. And the judge acted like he tended to agree, and I don't think any of you want to greatly disagree. Maybe you will, if you do, we can discuss it. But homelessness in my front yard is not a town of Marion problem, and it's not really your problem. It's a county, state, and federal problem, and they have a problem everywhere. And so, what are we gonna do about it? I'm gonna, I don't know what the word, I'm gonna adhere to the instructions of the town of Marion, put up no trespassing signs, you can send the police to the victim, arrest them, I don't know what to do. I'm not gonna go over there and make them leave, now, if that causes me to get more fines, you know, I'd, but. I've got at least 15 adults living in my front yard, and they're homeless. Some of them are drug addicts, some of them are middle, middling, they need to be in a facility. And some of them just need to be plugged in with whatever programs are with the state and federal to, you know, to deal with it. But the thing that I thought about today, because I spoke to the mayor when we came out of court last week. There's a movie several years ago with Bill Murray, it was an adaptation of The Christmas Carol, it's called Screw. And in the scene, Bill Murray has made contact with an ex-girlfriend who's running a homeless shelter. And she's dealing with it, finally he gets frustrated because he wants to get her out of there, or whatever, he says, scrape them off. And I would ask this counsel not to scrape them off. Diane knows that one of the people there is a former student, there's another former student of my brother, David. Knows two or three of them. And so, what I have come here tonight to ask you to do is to take this proposed motion, deal with it with whatever committee needs to be, how it needs to be dealt with. But what I'd like to do is to give that land to the town of Marion. And the town of Marion give me land somewhere else, and I have a nonprofit that I recently started, and I'll start raising money to build a halfway house, homeless shelter, or whatever it is. But some sort of, something so that adults, of course, there are no children, but I mean, adult people in our community don't like to sleep outside, and so, I just, I had it all written down, but I don't do good at reading. But I have this statement that I can send in an email that says everything. But I'd like to leave this with you.
Thank you.
And you can deal with it in a subsequent motion, in a subsequent meeting.
Please, sir.
I'll get it. Billy Hammond, looks old to me. It's been a long time, I didn't recognize him when the first time I saw him. Because it's been so long since I've talked to him. My purpose of being here tonight is to say that, you know, I'm complying with the code, complying with the court, complying with the judge, I'm gonna go pay the fine, but no trespassing signs are up. When the police department is ready to go deal with it, I would hope that the police department can deal with it instead of me. When the police department is ready to go deal with it, uh, I would hope that, that the police department can deal with it instead of me. And I hope that we would have the compassion to say, you know, we're not gonna put you in jail, but you, you also. And I told, I told several of them, I said, it's time to start making arrangements. But, uh, it's not sinking in or they don't have any one thing to do. What I'd like to see, if it's possible, when the town, uh, when the police department go in, to take Health and Human Services personnel in there and identify and find out who they are, where they're supposed to be. And, uh, uh, I, I, I mean.
I appreciate your candor and, and you're offering us a solution to the problem.
There's plenty of kids in the state hospital, but I don't know if you, you can't force them to live there, but you know. Anyway, thank you. I apologize it took this long. I didn't know what to do. With teasing Mark Finnick, I see him sitting over, I was teasing him. But once I got the son, I said, Mark, you won't have me put in jail. And I understand that it had to be dealt with this like this, but, uh, I, I paid the fine. The signs are up and please, uh, just try to be compassionate. If you would, when you vote that motion up or down or whatever, let me know. But I have a nonprofit and will be willing to raise the, I mean, uh, we'll raise the money if you'll give us the land to do something with the homeless problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we don't have any other, um, public comments at this point in time. But, uh, since I broke my own rule, if there's anyone that wishes to speak, now's your chance. And none being heard, we will move on now to council members, uh, and committee reports. And, uh, we'll begin with, uh, Larry Carter at the end.
Okay, just, uh, Todd was graciously substituted for me at the last district three meeting. Uh, you got anything to say about it?
Uh, not so much, but thank you. Um, you know, they, they are looking at maybe putting some bus stops around the town. Um, but that's a project that's just starting. So I think that would be a positive thing for all of us. So that's about all it came up.
Elected new officers.
Mm-hmm.
Gentleman from Bristol, uh, gosh. And then Charlie is vice chairman. And the gentleman from, uh, Washington County Board of Supervisors is the treasurer. And so new slate of officers. And of course, with the government shutdown, federal budget hadn't been approved. Federal funds are in, in limbo right now. Uh, we, we went to, uh, Mr. Finnick and the mayor and myself went to Roanoke for the annual VML conference. Uh, outstanding seminars were great. I particularly liked the railroad safety one. And of course, the data centers, uh, was just outstanding. It took, didn't take long to get over my head, but on the technicalities of the stuff. But I will say that Loudoun County, Virginia is number one in the world on data centers. And between China and the United States, it's gonna be a mad dog race who dominates the world in those things. That's the next big thing coming. All it is, is a concrete building with rows and racks of computer receivers. And, uh, so I'd like to get an expert down here sometime that I met to address us on that at some point in time. Quite interesting. That's about all.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. Uh, Councilwoman May?
No reports, Your Honor.
Councilman Manatle?
So I want to bring up, we've, we've sort of dropped the ball on the time because we should have done this before now. But, uh, as far as the BZA appointment, we still have a vacancy there that we need to fill. And I do have two individuals that are interested in filling this position. I don't know if anybody else has any. But, uh, one individual is Laura Gilli. She has expressed interest in it. And also Brenda Kelly from caring for a community group. So we do need to fill that vacancy. And I wanted to bring both of these names up to council and see if anybody wanted to make a motion in the form of a nomination for either of those individuals.
I'd see Ms. Jennings.
Can I make a motion while he's talking or?
Um, if you're making a motion to, um, place someone on the committee, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to put Brenda Kelly on the, on the committee, BZA committee.
Board of zoning appeals.
The board of zoning, yeah.
I'd second Ms. Kelly's nomination.
You're seconding that nomination. Do, do we have any other, um, nomination? Well, we have a nomination of Ms. Kelly in a second.
Well, before we proceed with that vote, I would like to ask if anybody else has any people in mind that has retched out to them? So if nobody else has any, anybody in mind, those are the two that I have spoke with.
I appreciate you giving.
So we have one position?
Yes. I, I appreciate you giving Ms. Gilli, uh, a mention there. And hopefully we can find a place if she wishes to serve on some other, uh, committee at some point in the future. So please keep her name.
Yeah, certainly.
But we have a motion in second to place Brenda Kelly on the BZA committee. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? And it's unanimous Brenda Kelly will be on the committee.
And that is all for my report for today.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Jennings?
Okay, the only thing I want to say is the chili cookoff looked very well. But I'm gonna thank Ken and all of his people for all the hard work, uh, Public Works, the police, EMS, everybody that works on it. That's all.
Laura?
Yeah, it was in trouble.
Councilwoman Spencer?
No reports, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Hicks?
Uh, yes, I have two things. Uh, I want to thank Mr. Ham, uh, for the work that you guys did at the state hospital area there, uh, putting up.
I'm so grateful for the work.
Putting up, or relay that to them for me, please. I appreciate it. Uh, and I want to ask, what about the far end of Marion? Do we need to put something there at that entrance?
I'm on that committee too. And we, we discussed, uh, with Tony, he was gonna till it up and I think we were going. You're talking about the west end of town down there at Washington Avenue? When we met with Tony and Billy, he was thinking about tilling it up and just putting wildflowers in there this spring or whatever the proper time is.
He, he may have to work tomorrow.
So he, yeah, just, just refresh his memory on that. You remember Debbie on that?
Just gonna plant flowers, probably.
Yeah.
And, and that's a step right up there.
Right, 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 for the fall.
Come spring, that'd be.
You remember we discussed that?
Yes.
About the wildflowers. Unless you wanted to add something else we need down there.
Well, that just looks so good there.
Yeah.
And the one that by the hospital, and that looks really great there. But coming into Marion down that end, it's just bland.
We discussed, I'm gonna view it as it down there.
Yeah, we could put something small there, maybe, just to brighten it up, maybe. Something to think about, I guess.
It's good.
Okay. Oh, yeah. I attended the, um, on the courthouse steps, what, I guess it was two weeks ago, three weeks ago. And I meant to say something the last time, on the drug, um, program.
Recovery court?
Uh, yes, recovery court. And I was amazed at the people there. Some of them, there were some old students of mine that had gone through the program, that has had success. And I just want to say that, that program is awesome. And, um, maybe next time they have it, uh, maybe more can show up with support. Because the more we can get off drugs and get back on the right track, the better off our town's gonna be. If we, if they see our support, that we are behind them and, and the work that they're doing to get clean. And I always think that it could be my family. And it has been, you know, sometime my family. And it could be me, it could be any of us. And we just, and they need support, not just left out there. But, uh, hands up to what, to what they've done, the success that they've accomplished. That's all I've got to say.
Can I make another statement?
Yes.
About the drug court? I want to thank Mr. Finnick, who has been very helpful and involved in that from, for many years, I guess, right?
Since the Ford started.
Yeah. A graduation is a wonderful thing to go through.
Yes.
That's all.
Thank you, very uplifting, thanks. I'll go ahead and make my mayor's report very brief. We did attend VML, uh, Mr. Finnick, Mr. Carter and I. There was a lot of great information there. While there, I did complete the Mayor's Institute, which I had been looking forward to for quite some time. And testament to, I have a certificate of completion, uh, from the Mayor's Institute. I, I, there was no exam, there was, so. I'd share it there. And, uh, I feel much more confident about, um, my role as mayor here in the town of Marion now that I have completed that course. Um, I do appreciate Mr. Carter and Mr. Finnick for, uh, all of their help and camaraderie while we were there. We, um, I, I think that it's well worth the involvement in VML. Um, I spoke with Michelle Doughty. And, um, she said that she might come and speak with council at some future point, giving us a little bit more information about VML, about some of the programs and some of the benefits there, there are by me associated with VML. And, uh, that might, that might be good for us. And, um, I think Mr. Carter had alluded to something like that. Um, so, uh, I guess that's really your program, Larry, but appreciate that. I did speak with her briefly about that and other things, so.
She's very knowledgeable.
Yes, yes. And, uh, that will conclude the mayor's report. Uh, so we are getting along with the evening and, um, we will, uh, now proceed with the attorney's report.
So I want to thank town council for allowing me to go to the Virginia Municipal League meeting. While at that meeting, I did attend, um, sessions each, um, time that they were offered for me to go to. During one of the breakfasts, there were two council members that sat down with me at different times, but they were from Roanoke. And I did speak with them about their issue with regards to vaping. And they did say, no, they have a problem and it, what one of their members on their council had presented was not legal. But it did get a lot of advertisement. They, they did say that when I told them what our, or the town of Marion's ordinance was, they liked that and they, they wanted to get a copy of our ordinance so that they might consider adopting that. There were also some staff members, uh, from Roanoke that sat down that morning and, and spoke with me. So it was very beneficial in that regards, as well as the different sessions that I went to. So thank you for allowing me to go. With regards to EDA properties, I did get a call today to go sign as to form, uh, four deeds that the EDA is in the process of, of selling. I'm not sure, there, some of them were getting parts of property that the EDA had acquired. There was a question as to one of the properties that the EDA has and put a house on. And that is being worked out so that, that has not yet, um, gotten to where I needed to go sign. There were some issues before, um, the financing could be confirmed. So hopefully we'll have another EDA property with the house that ends up being sold. That's all.
Thank you very much. And, uh, again, do, do appreciate you being at VML. We will proceed with staff reports and Cindy Stanley.
Just the accounts, please.
So do we have a motion to set the accounts for payment?
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion to say, do we have any individual items, uh, contained in the accounts that you would like explanation for? Yes, Ms. Jennings?
Sandy, just want to ask a question. Is, is it a lot, have we paid out a lot this month? Or have we gotten any more money than we thought?
We have a, there's a large one on the, um, monthly accounts for water, mine materials for one of the surf projects.
Yeah. Actually, there's more than one, right? For surf.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of big ones. That's, I think it's 13, 14 phase material. And we like just a couple of documents of closing out on that loan. So once we do that, some of that money will be coming back.
Okay. And what about, uh, item number 122, the pickleball resurfacing? Is, is that a lot of money for that or is that?
Well, that was pickleball in tennis court.
Yeah.
Or basketball.
Is that what it costs to res, I guess it's expensive. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the accounts? Give you a couple of minutes. No other questions? We have a motion in a second to pay the bills. So, all in favor? And passes in nicely. Okay, so we've paid the bills. We will move along now to, uh, the PD's report and we'll let Lieutenant Billings take that.
I think I will abstain.
Then we'll get a hard pass there from, uh, Lieutenant Billings. Um, Chief Ham, Marion Fire EMS.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things to touch on tonight. And of course, I lose my place. As I said last meeting, uh, the month of October's been very busy for Marion Fire EMS, with it being Fire Prevention Week, Fire Prevention Month. We've had Grace United, or Grace Christian Academy down at our station. Uh, we've been out to Oak Point Elementary School. Uh, this past weekend, we participated and actually facilitated a smoke detector blitz here in the town. I unfortunately was able to attend. CJ Earls and Julius Weinberger stepped up and handled the logistics of that program for us. And a big shout out to them for stepping up and helping out. Uh, we've got some other things, um, on the way. We've got two more daycares to see. We're going to Marion Elementary School. If you haven't seen our scarecrow, go by and check out our scarecrow, scarecrow lane. Uh, I know our team, our scarecrow team put in, uh, some time with that. Uh, we also participated in, uh, the dodgeball tournament, uh, to help raise money for Santa's Elves. And it's my understanding that Dicky's Dodgers did not win. But, uh, I'm sure they had a good time. As far as September call numbers go, we're at 197 calls, uh, in the month of September. That puts us just, uh, shy of 2,000 at 1,958 for the year. That's about one, a little over 1% down from 2024. We have, uh, our, your team has seen a lot of, a lot of trauma here recently on, on calls. They, more so than I can recall in such a short span of time. And they've all done an outstanding job. Uh, I think it's important, uh, that that gets noted. Uh, and if you happen to see any of our team out, uh, shake their hand and thank them. Uh, they've seen a lot of things here over the last few weeks. Uh, just a reminder too, that it is very dry outside, okay? Don't be burning, but we've already seen a couple of grass and brush fires here over the last week. So, uh, to those of you watching at home and, um, be mindful of that. Don't do any outdoor burning. Um, and in closing, I'd just like to say that, uh, for various reasons, medical and, and traveling stuff, I've been a bit scarce lately. And I'd just like to personally thank our team at Marion Fire EMS for, for stepping up and taking the lead on some things. for stepping up and taking the lead on some things. Prime example, I was supposed to be teaching all day at Emmering-Henry College, and Battalion Chief Dolly has stepped up and has wanted to take that for me. I'm still looking for someone to teach four hours of fire safety, if any of you are interested for that Saturday afternoon, so. If you guys don't have any questions, that's all I got.
Chief, thank you much.
Thanks, have a great day.
Good job.
Good work.
I knew you were back there.
Ken Heep with Economic Development.
Thanks, Charlie.
And by the way, Ken, good job on the chili cook.
It was the public works crew and volunteers and police, fire and rescue did it. It was a great job, and I appreciate you guys recognizing that. Great time backing it up a little bit, so it wasn't quite as cold when Hank was on there, because I think Dolly would have frozen to death. So I'm glad it turned out. Progressing on, we have our Halloween Madness this Saturday from eleven to one. And at your request, police request and your approval, we will be shutting down Main Street, the block from Church Street to Commerce with police officers down there. We'll be setting up about ten o'clock, so if you, if you want to come out and enjoy the fun, you're welcome to come sit on the back of Jeep with me. I'll have a thermos of coffee and we'll sit there and watch your kids, and it's always a lot of fun. One thing I had that is in your agenda tonight that just came through, I had been working on this for a while, Larry Sheretz from Withfield is partners with the Millers and Blazing Scoops, the ice cream shop, Creamery that's going in where Sarah Jewelry used to be. His credit score is certainly one of the best we've had. It's been approved by the Loan Committee for a fifteen thousand dollar loan from the small business loan pool. If you guys remember, this is a program we set up to USDA rural development. It's a sixty-month loan, two percent interest, fifteen thousand dollars. And I request that you approve this loan in the amount for fifteen thousand dollars for Larry Sheretz for Blazing Scoops.
Can I make that motion?
Thank you, ma'am.
Second. Motion, second, any discussion?
Good idea.
And it's really interesting. I've, I have worked with a lot of folks in my time, and Brittany's one of the sharpest young restaurateurs I've ever worked with. She's cooked since she's fifteen years old, and she and I were eleven o'clock last night just throwing ideas back and forth. She's very smart, very energetic about the business. They certainly have put a lot of money in, invested in there. If you're in there when Bill was in there, Bill was like I am, kind of like my office. You come in there and you figure out how to try to get around there. Avery knows that better than anybody. Avery, Bill and I were on a race to see who would become a collector or a hoarder first. And I think we both tied. You're in there, yeah, exactly. So, but it's, they've really made it nice in there, and they're hoping to open up. They'll be down this Saturday, giving out some coupons and stuff to get people back in. Our pop-up Marion class continues. This is our fourth week, this Thursday. Anybody interested next week, next Thursday night, we'll be doing the presentations. And I don't know how many in that class will actually be presenting. I know that the Millers will be. The rest of the people in that class are, unless things change, are going to be doing business out in the county. So they'll be going out in the county for their, to do the chamber. They're using our class as a precursor for the chamber. So we may only have one award this time, which is okay, because we have very few spaces downtown to rent. Lastly, we met with the Baxter's this morning. They continue to work on the properties at the lower end of Main Street, where Pass Tom Antique burned those properties, and they're on track on having those finished. Still looking at twenty-three apartments upstairs and five commercial spaces downstairs. One of those, they hope to finish out for a restaurant. So, that end of Main Street will be re-energized, and I think just fixing up the storefronts has done a lot, so. A lot of good things going on, and as we head into the Christmas season. Bill Thompson reached out to us. He's the one who brought the guy from the Marion Mets here a couple of years ago. There's a gentleman, and I can't think of his name, and I knew, Suzie and I were talking about it earlier, and it slipped when it came through. But he's in the military, pretty high up in the Pentagon. He came from Marion, went to school here in Marion, and I'll get that information too. He's willing to come in here and serve as our parade grand marshal. I think that'd be, especially in this time, with everything going on in the world, it'd be nice to honor somebody who is serving our country from right here in Marion and has done so well, and I'll have a bio and stuff for you next time.
How's the other pop-up?
We got a vote. Yeah, let's go ahead and get this motion and second out.
Sorry, I just keep rattling on. Thank you for stopping me.
It's impossible to interrupt a radio DJ.
Exactly.
Especially when they're on the radio.
You cut a song there and you're done.
Motion and second to approve the loan for Brett.
All right, for, this is for Larry Sheretz.
Larry Sheretz.
Larry Sheretz, yeah. He's the funding partner for him.
Okay, funding partner Larry Sheretz. All in favor?
Now, thank you. Now, what was your question, sir?
How's the other pop-up loans? Are they keeping up pretty good?
Oh, yeah, the two different things. Pop-up, we gave the grants, the loans, our bank loans. Unfortunately, we've had to take some people to court. We've got judgment, also the twenty-fifth, this Thursday, we go back for the second round. There were four people on that list that the county couldn't find. Two live in Richmond. I tracked down their number, their home address, and gave it to the Sheriff's Department. Two were here in town, and I'm not sure how they missed them, but we gave that information to them again, so. We're very diligent about that, and very jealous about taxpayer money for loaning it out, because I need that money to provide to people like this that want to start up. And I hate for a business to go under as much as anybody.
It's evolving, fine.
It is. And I hate to see anybody lose out, and I hate to see anybody that has had a business failure continue to suffer. But they know it going in. We're very clear upfront that this is a personal loan to you, to Mr. Sheretz, that he has to use the money for Blazing Scoops. But if something happens and it goes south, I will come after him personally, and we will go to court and I'll win, so. And Mr. Finnick's been very good about helping with that. Yes, ma'am?
It's great that we're having twenty-three more apartments downtown. That's great. Where are they going to park?
They have worked out an agreement with Methodist Church for some parking, so they have addressed the parking. They worked that out with Bill before I got involved in the project, but they have made some arrangements for their tenants to park there. That being said, you know, as, well, you know as well as I do, we tend to be not the most, we're not European when it comes to walking. I'll put it that way, to be polite. So what will happen is, people will park in front of where they live, and we'll be relying on the police department, and we'll, I'm sure we'll have to step up. You know, right now, it's not much of an issue down there, because just certain times of the year, it gets a little busy, lunchtime down at Sisters, those, it gets busy. But we're seeing more and more, you know. Some, we were down at downtown Pioneer today, and there was a guy came here traveling, had four more hours to go, and because of traffic on the interstate, got off and came down here. And we're seeing that chili cook-off. I was surprised, so many people came up from Canada, from all different areas, and they were, hey, we just were passing through. We didn't realize there was even anything going on, and what a great little town you have here. So more and more people are coming through. It's becoming more of a problem, and that's a problem that we absolutely are going to have to address as we continue to grow the town. And next month, I hope to have at least the beginning of our 2035 vision that I can present to council and to the public. And one of the recommendations is going to be how we address parking, because that's going to be a challenge for us. If we don't meet the parking challenge now, then we're going to have a problem with empty stores and starting all over again, and I'm too old for that, so. Let's keep going with what we got. Don't, I didn't, Alice, I didn't ask you for questions.
But I will say, for parking, we got, we got a lot better situation than Roanoke. Mark can testify to that. A lot of walking, a lot of walking, which is fine with me.
Well, you know, the mayor, not this mayor, the other mayor, Hammonds and I always used to talk about. He said, you know, if you come up here and park in front of this building, even on the busiest court days, you can find places to park downtown.
You can.
It's just being motivated to do so.
And they have private parking too, so.
Thank you all for all you do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
For paid parking.
We do not have Todd along with us tonight, but if Clay would like to take his place, then we may hear from zoning and property maintenance.
Yeah, I was just going to mention two things. Lloyd in our ordinance, Todd sent out by email to the council, and as of Friday, he hadn't heard any feedback, so I guess he's just waiting for any, any feedback, for any ideas, changes, or anything that y'all want to see in there, whether adding or taking away. The other thing I was going to mention is, we've had, we started back in March working on the enclosures for trash dumpsters. From March to July, we identified twenty dumpsters that weren't enclosed, that were visible from the street. And so far to today is, we've had sixteen enclosures built around dumpsters, and we have two that were moved so that they would be not visible from the street. And then we have two that are still not compliant, no, we have three that are still not compliant, that are working, working towards that. So hopefully, we'll, those three can become compliant before the year's up.
Are we not ready to do a public present, public hearing for the loitering ordinance?
We are ready, if you are.
Yeah.
I would like to.
We had to wait for your feedback before we took, brought it to that point.
I'd like to make a motion to set that.
We need to go ahead and say, I've looked at it myself.
Have you all read it?
Yes, I have.
Yes.
I'll second Tricia's motion.
Yeah, I thought that I had responded.
Motion and second. We might want to send that to legal. I'm sure that Mr. Finnick has looked at it, but I just want to make sure that our loitering ordinance doesn't violate any constitutional rights or any civil rights of any individuals. That being said, if, if Mr. Finnick feels it passes muster, and we don't need another opinion on that, I assert the pleasure of counsel.
Yeah. That's, it's almost a word for word, we've got to stay. So if they're, we're in there, they're in there.
I assert the pleasure of council, and you have a motion and a second.
And Mr. Finnick's already looked at it.
Yes. I just wanted to bring that up, yes.
I have a question for Mr. Finnick. Do you want that for the next council meeting? Or as soon as you can, can you get it published? As soon as whatever your time is. Then that would need to be the second meeting in November.
What was that by?
That's great.
It needs to be published twice, two consecutive times in the newspaper.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second.
Second meeting in November, that's seventeen. Thank you, Cindy.
To set it for the seventeenth? All in favor? Um, I did not.
Oh, I couldn't see you.
I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions? That's all, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
What Mr. Davis didn't tell you is, at least one of the two that have not yet complied has been served what the class one warrant.
Is that class one misdemeanor?
Yes. Now, because of it going against an entity, it's fine only. Registered agent did speak with Mr. Loong, and my hope is that they'll comply. When we go to court, let me say it's been complied.
Okay, so we will move ahead now. And we have the town manager's report. Billy Ham.
Okay, a lot of them sound like the same stuff that we talked about last time, but I'll give you what updates I have. Page nine through twelve, that's East Main Waterline. They're continuing with the tie-overs. I did find out this evening, if I understood them right, they're winding up the tie-overs, so they should, should have that done. If it wasn't done today, they should have it done this week, all the tie-overs. They've started working at raw water intake at the water plant. I've not been up there, so I don't know how that's going. But they are working on Steel Park Playground. If you've been by there, they're, it's starting to take shape. They've had the paving done for some time now. They've been, last week, I went by there. They're working on the fence and working on the picnic shelter, so it's starting to take shape, slowly but surely. Market Street Sewer Project. We started staging some of the stone on sixteen. We've had a lot of stone hauled in in the last week. The contractor is having some holdup with getting some of these permits cleared. So, last camp we had from him, he hopes he can get started by the first of November, Market Street. To my knowledge, they're going to start on this lower end and work their way up when they do start.
Who is the contractor?
Justin McCloud.
Justin.
On the ninth of this month, I signed the agreement with VDOT. We was awarded state of good repair after at least one, maybe two attempts applying for it. That means that they will pave for us from roughly around CJ's up to the fire station on South Main. So that was, that's real good. So, I don't know that it probably, it won't be this fall. They won't beat it out until this winter, so you're probably looking at spring, aren't you? Again, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Unless you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Counsel, any questions?
Amphitheater and over in there, how's it doing?
Amphitheater?
Yeah.
Well, we, we're using it for material storage right now.
Right now?
Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing further, then we will move into closed session. And Congresswoman Jen, you'll take this into closed session.
I make a motion, we go into closed session and discuss three issues. First, a real estate issue is allowed under state code two point two thirty-seven eleven A three. A legal issue is allowed under state code two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A seven, and a personnel issue is allowed under state code two point two thirty-seven A one.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor of going into closed session? We stand adjourned for closed session. Take five minutes, all right? Take five minutes, all right?
Okay, I make a motion and we come back into open session and declare we only discuss the three topics that we went into closed session for as allowed under State Code 2.23712. Amen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Paul.
Can I have roll call?
Cornette?
Yes.
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Hatwell?
Yes.
The Marion Town Council October 20 meeting is now back in regular session. Is there any further matters to come before the council?
Just stay, the three of you stay of us and so we can set a meeting date.
Okay, are there any other motions that need to come before the council?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.